Calling to all of the Monday, June 6th, 2014.
January 6th.
January 6th.
Wishful thinking.
It feels like June out there.
It does feel like June. It's surprisingly moderate.
That's right. It's a rough start to the new year here. We want to bypass this cold weather. January 6th, 2014, meeting of the 35th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
I am here.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Here.
Councilmember Stemmon? Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekell with second by Councilmember Edgar. Any changes, additions to the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And would you please stand? I see Reverend Sullivan is with us this evening for the invocation.
Let's bow and pray. God, we give you thanks. We have so much to be thankful for as we begin this new year and we especially are thankful for warm places when it's so cold outside. And Lord, I give thanks for our city leaders and city servants who do such an excellent job running our city and providing services and we pray, God, for protection over them even as the work crews are out right now working on the water main that you would protect them and keep them safe. God, we pray your blessing over each of our city officials and leaders that you would bless them this year with wisdom with each decision that they get to make, that they would look to you for your perspective on matters that feel overwhelming to them. Pray that you would continue to give us creativity where finances might be tight, that you would show us ways to make things happen so that this city can continue to flourish and be a place of blessing where you are reaching people and meeting needs. And I pray that this time together tonight would be done expeditiously and we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the public comments section of tonight's meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the form provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being discussed. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Seeing no great rush to the microphone then, we will move on to the next order of business, which is the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular 35th City Council meeting of December 16th, 2013.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Edgar? Kadekell?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's agenda?
Recognizations and presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none on the consent agenda then, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 114. Matter of accepting a gift from the Rochester Avon Hills Society and the Rochester Hills Museum for the donation of a Benjamin Muley Grain Cradle.
Is there a motion to approve R. 114?
Motion to approve R. 114.
Motion approved by Councilmember Baker with support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. Thank you for joining us on this cold, bitter night. You know, this item is something that I know that has a lot of meaning to the members of the city's historical committee and I know that they're very, very pleased on this item. So, and we've kind of held back on a little bit because we were hoping to get some of the other members from the city of Rochester to join us, but again, we didn't want to delay any further. So with that, I'll turn it over to, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind?
Yes.
I'll turn it over to Councilman Baker so that he can read the resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. It is indeed a pleasure to read this resolution on behalf of the City of Berkeley and the Historical Committee. It reads as follows. "A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting a gift from the Rochester Avon Historical Society and the Rochester Hills Museum for the donation of a Benjamin Muley Grain Cradle. Whereas, the City of Berkeley Historical Committee's mission is to enhance and promote the history of the City of Berkeley and the Rochester Avon Historical Society and the Rochester Hills Museum have generously donated a Benjamin Muley Grain Cradle to be displayed in the City of Berkeley's Historical Museum. And, the Grain Cradle was invented by John Benjamin sometime before 1830 when he purchased 160 acres of land that is now the site of the Roseland Park Cemetery. The cradles replaced ciths in harvesting grain and were considered to be a major aid for farmers by enabling them to harvest grain more efficiently. In fact, these cradles were sold all over the country as far west as the Dakotas and were a major boon to agriculture until the invention of the mechanical grain harvesters later on. And, the Berkeley Historical Committee has long been interested in obtaining one of the cradles for display in the museum since the device represents an important milestone in Berkeley's history. The cradle is now on display in the museum along with the cith and photos of working, and photos of workers laying the cradle. And, now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves that the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepts the gift of the Benjamin Muley Grain Cradle and, the gift provided from the Rochester Avon Historical Society and the Rochester Hills Museum shall be displayed for all who frequent the Berkeley Historical Museum. And, the Berkeley Historical Committee and the City Council are grateful for the generosity of the Rochester Avon Historical Society and the Rochester Hills Museum for their contributions to preserve the rich history of the City of Berkeley. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, January 6th, 2014, the Honorable Dr. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor."
Thank you. And I believe we have the Chair of the Historical Committee here, Dr. Sue Richardson.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Baker, for that introduction.
My pleasure.
This may not seem like much, but we really are thrilled to have this as an addition to the museum. It's very important to our history because it was something invented here and, as the resolution points out, was distributed long distances and was considered cutting-edge, shall we say, no pun intended, in agriculture. We had sought to get one of these for years. People were even searching eBay. And then Jeff Tong, who's the Vice Chair of the Committee, took it upon himself to start touring local museums to get some ideas for how we could really improve the displays in our museum. And lo and behold, the Rochester Hills Museum had not just one, but more than one, and because Jeff is so charming, he asked them if they could see their way clear to donating one and they were very willing to do that. It's too bad that they weren't able to be here to, you know, for us to formally thank them. We're very appreciative. And so this is an important addition to the museum. We are currently working on revamping the museum and are planning to have a grand opening once everything is there, so we're going to let people know when that is. But in the meantime, we continue to be open Sundays, 2 to 4, so we invite people to come in and see not only our Grain Cradle, but, you know, our new displays that we have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, as I recall, that was designed and produced in where the cemetery is now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's the general area of our city where the original manufacturing and production of that particular-
That's correct.
... agricultural implement occurred. Very good.
Yes.
Anything else, Councilmember Baker, that you might want to add?
Thank you again, Your Honor. Just to express my gratitude again to the Committee for their dedication, not only with this particular item, but for the work that they do to promote the city's history, to preserve it, and to help capture moments like these. And again, our gratitude to the Rochester Avon Historical Society for their generous support for us as well.
And we still have copies of the Berkeley History Book on sale, so, and we have a new mug, too. So, you know, we hope people will continue to support us that way.
Well, with the temperatures we have nowadays, I'm sure those coffee mugs will be well-used, so keep us warm.
That's right. Sure. Thank you. This is another example of local communities, local cities collaborating and working together. And this is something that they had over in Rochester Avon area and they were prepared to share it with us. And that's the kind of collaboration that we like to see and we want to be part of going forward. So, thank you again for all your work in securing this and Jeff's charm in bringing it back to Berkeley for us. Thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. 114?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three?
Yes. Resolution number R. 214. Matter of approving a resolution establishing the policy and guide for granting and exemption for payment of property taxes.
Is there a motion to approve R. 214?
Motion to approve 214.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak with second from Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa?
Council, some of you may recall, this is a matter that is brought to you on an annual basis by our Finance Director, Mr. David Sabuda, and it's done in accordance with Public Act 390 of 1994. And basically what this does is it provides us with the poverty income guidelines that we give to our Board of Review so that they in turn can use and determine whether or not an individual is eligible for some type of poverty exemption of some sort. I'm not going to read the household requirements, but they will have this information and it will be posted so that people can see. According to the memorandum that our Finance Director has put together, and I'll turn it over to him so he can give us a little bit more details, it's just simply that this is the information that will be used by the Board of Review and it starts March 1st, 2014, and they use it all the way up until December 2014. So, Mr. Sabuda, I know you have a little bit more information you'd like to share. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sessa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. It's good to see you all. As Mrs. Sessa said, this is an annual item. Dollar values for the various levels of income that the Board will be utilizing have gone up 2% to 3%. We also do an asset limit test, which is also, the asset limits testing levels have gone up 2% to 3%. An individual can get an application for hardship at the City of Berkeley's Treasury Department. They'll be ready to go the 3rd of February and they'll be available from 3rd of February through the whole calendar year. So, if you miss a date or you miss, you're not sure when to come in, just come in, get the application. That's how you start the process in order to obtain a hardship for your property taxes. And again, you can get that at the Berkeley City Treasury Department on or after the 3rd of February. This application can be utilized either at the March Board of Review, at the July Board of Review, or at the December Board of Review. And we would like to have those early so we can give them to the Board so that they can make a good decision. However, someone can utilize the application and bring it with them on the day of their meeting. And we would stress that if you're going to come to the Board of Review, especially in March, that you set an appointment through Oakland County Equalization. The annual flyers for property taxes will be going out in January per state law and probably by the end of the month, they should be at your door. So, with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions that the Council may have.
Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three different levels. Can you explain those?
Sure. The, basically the way this works is the Board, the Board of Review, will determine your household level first. How many persons are in the household? And right now, it's, as the table shows, and it's in the resolution, anywhere from 1 to 8. And we'll keep the example with the 1 through 8. Based upon the application in your assets, your cash flows, if you're a household of 1, you could, again, if you were, if you have $11,490 or less in revenue, you could be eligible for a, if you're a homeowner, eligible for a full exemption on your property taxes. You also take the asset limit and you take, and you look at that $26,735 number, that is also weighed by the Board. And basically what happens there is there are certain assets that someone could sell and how much are those assets? And then what ends up happening is, is if you're over that asset limit, then you would not be eligible for a hardship. Now, the partial hardship, you go from $11,490 on a household size of 1 to $22,650, then the Board is looking at maybe a partial type of exemption, 10%, 15%, 20%. But those are the cutoff levels that the Board will use in order to determine whether you have a hardship. Now, the Board will ask for basic minimum requirements that are in the resolution and the Board has their professional judgment on all cases of hardship. So, these are guidelines. These are not hard and fast and these guidelines are just that, guidelines. So, when someone comes to the Board of Review and presents a hardship case, the Board takes all information into consideration when a homeowner comes to the Board. You're welcome.
So, clearly, one can't just show up and say, "I need a little adjudication in my favor."
Correct.
We have to have facts and documents and-
Absolutely.
-someone to substantiate the claims and-
Absolutely.
Very good. Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the asset will still come into play on the partial?
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. Whether it's a full or a partial, absolutely. I also want to point out that the income levels are determined by Health and Human Services. I don't pick those numbers up. On the upper levels of the partial, those come from HUD and the asset limit numbers are developed, they're developed through the years and they rise or fall based upon the Health and Human Services number, the percent increase or the percent decrease. And we increase those or decrease those asset limits year in and year out based upon the increase or decrease on the Health and Human Services numbers. So, all this is coming from the federal government, basically.
Any additional discussion on this topic? Hearing none then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. 214?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Resolution number R. 314. Matter of approving a resolution amending the merit system of personnel management.
Is there a motion to approve R. 314?
Move to approve R. 314.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekell?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa?
Council, this matter is something that I have been working on for, Lord, I know it's been more than a year. And what I did was I appointed an employee from each of, or the non-union employee, from each of the departments in the City of Berkeley, and I asked them to take a look at the merit system, as we call it, and come up with some recommendations as to what they thought needed to be updated. Now, the merit system, for those of you that are out there, it's the, it represents the personnel policies for non-union employees. And it is done in accordance with the city charter. Our city charter simply asks the City Council to adopt a personnel policy for the non-union employees of the City of Berkeley. And this is basically what it is. The employees came up with some recommendations. But then shortly, very shortly thereafter, we dealt with the President's Healthcare Program. And that had many changes that affected our part-time employees in particular. And so I had to go back and make some changes within our policy so that it would comply with the President's new policies. So, I did that. Now, I'm not going to go into great detail with each of them. I've given you in your FYI reports, I've sent copies of it so that you can take a look at it. But again, just for the public out there so that they can understand what are some of the issues that we're going to, that I'm asking the City Council to consider updating and/or amending depending on the request here. The employees, they came up with basically two recommendations and one of them was to simply describe or better define the word termination. What does that mean? Many people felt that whenever you used the word termination, that meant that it was, that you were fired. And that's not always the case. You can retire, you can quit, or you can find another job, whatever. So, we clarified that. Another item that they asked me to clarify was the issue of bereavement. And here again, this is something where even if you're a brand-new employee, sometimes sadly, things happen and you need to, you know, you need to address the issue. So, again, we clarified that, not just for full-time employees, but also for part-time And then I think those were the, those are the big changes that the employees came up with. And as I said earlier, because of the changes that came across through the President's Healthcare Program, I went back and I looked at the, at our manual to update them. Now, there's a couple of changes that I'm recommending. The first thing is just the name of the manual itself. You know, we call it the Merit System of Personnel Management and I'd like to kind of update it a little bit and recommend that it be called the Merit System of Human Resource Management is one of the recommendations that I have. Another item, again, it's to update Sections 401 through, I mean, 404 through 404.04. And again, it's simply, the intent here is to clarify the definition and management of part-time staff. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this issue here. And then also, I do have a new section and this is a section that relates to the reclassification of existing positions. And here again, this happens when, because of a position and, as you know, sometimes because of budgetary issues or even the position itself just grows or changes, then I have to go in there and reclassify the position. Sometimes it becomes something totally new or sometimes I have to take a look at the position itself and maybe perhaps change the tasks of that position. So again, I just want to make it very clear to the employees that I can do that and that it is being done in accordance with our personnel manual or, in this case, as we now call it, the Human Resource Manual. So that's, that is what I'm recommending. The only, the only one of these items that I suppose will have some type of financial impact, in my personal opinion, although perhaps here again, they will all have some type of financial issue, but it should be budgeted and it should be addressed. But there is, there are some changes for the part-time employees in particular and we will see some changes as it relates to time. And the other thing with part-time employees, in the past, many part-time employees actually received benefits from the City of Berkeley. Again, here, because of our financial situation and things of that nature, we've had to, we've had to change that. And so what I've done here is to try to bring everybody at the same level, make sure that everybody has the same type of benefits. And unfortunately, again, because of costs and things of that nature, the part-time employees that were hired after, I want to say, July 1st, 2008, they will see a change as it relates to acquiring vacation and sick leave. They will no longer be allowed to do that. However, there are four employees in particular that will be affected by this. My recommendation is to simply allow them to take this time so that they don't lose it. It's not a lot of time that they've been able to incur. Some of them don't, haven't even incurred any time. They just, were just recently hired. So, but I will, those that have incurred a few hours, I will grant them an opportunity to use it within the next six months. Of course, if they need a little bit more time, I'd be, I'd work with them. I'd be more than happy to do this. I just put the deadline of June 30th just to give us some, a target date, but of course, I will work with the employees if something else occurs. And there's only four that will impact them. And I'll be, I'll be working with them. I will make sure that we send a letter to all the employees about the changes. Now, I say all the employees, I mean all non-union employees. And they will get a letter from me and they will also, again, get a new copy of the new policy book. And then as soon as we get a new IT coordinator, I'll make sure that it gets placed on the Internet as well because we do have a space for employees to go to. They could get information, forms, things of that nature, and I'll make sure that that's updated. And then the only last thing that I wanted to say is that I did work with our city attorney and we went painstakingly through each of these items to make sure that they, that they did what we wanted them to do and that they were, that they were legal. And I want to thank my assistant, Darshel Strickland-Love, for also working with us on this issue because she went through a lot. And of course, all of the non-union employees who also took their time to sit down and meet and come up with their recommendations. So, again, it's not often that I bring this to you, Mayor and City Council, but I think it is long overdue and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the City Manager? This seems like an item that probably we should have done a lot sooner than now. Every corporation, every business revises its Human Resource Manual in light of the constraints that they experience in the economy. And so simply what we're doing here is recognizing the limitations that exist within the city and trying to, and I'm very pleased to see that you included the employees and got their input into the process as well. I think looking over the entire piece, it seems wise and well-thought-out and while not everybody gets what they want, nobody is especially hurt either. So, we can transition from the older manual to the new one in a kind way, in a way that doesn't cause any great loss to anybody. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Are there any additional comments, discussion? Councilmember Blanchard?
I'd just like to say that we've read this, seen this twice now and I've read it a couple of times and it seems to be well-thought-out. I agree with you. And I, everything is covered in here. I didn't see anything that was not covered, so it's a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no additional discussion on that item then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. 314?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Kadekell? Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M. 114. Matter of authorizing the City Manager to submit an application for the City of Berkeley to join the National League of Cities at a cost not to exceed $1,266.
Is there a motion to approve M. 114?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekell? Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa?
You know, Council, I'm pretty sure that for the majority of you, you know that I've talked to you all about joining NLC for many, many years. I mean, I have worked with them in the past and I have found them to be an incredible organization. Finally, this past year, our mayor was able to attend one of the sessions and I think he was ready to, to create some new positions that he hoped to have in our city. But you know, we have, even though we have not been a formal member of the National League of Cities, we do participate in some of their programs. As a matter of fact, they do stay in touch with all the communities throughout the United States. They are the oldest and largest municipal-type organization in the United States and they do an amazing job. One of the programs that we do participate, again, so the viewing public can understand a little bit better, is this Service Line Warranty Program that we've been, that we've agreed to help co-sponsor, for lack of a better word, or at least recommend to our residents for them to consider. And this is a program that allows- And this is a program that allows homeowners to have an affordable mechanism to help them ensure, you know, their water and sewer lines, you know, hopefully before anything negative happens, especially in, right now. Let's hope everybody's, you know, participated in this. But if not, it is not mandatory. I, when I do get called, I let people know it's not mandatory. There are other companies that do this, and I let them know. But I think this is a great program. It provides, actually, this program actually does come back to the city of Berkeley in a small amount of revenue to our city. I mean, by no means, it won't save our budgetary problems, but I believe that it will cer- it will certainly help us to offset this cost. The cost that I've recommended to you all this evening is 15% less than what the ordinary cost would be. So just so you know, if you see it next year, if it goes up a little, it is a 15% discount for first-time owners. But as I said, it's, it's an incredible organization. They, they do so many things. I won't go into great detail. I will ask the residents to go online a little bit and learn more about the National League of Cities. But I can tell you also that our, many of our neighbors are also members of this fantastic organization. I know the city of Huntington Woods, I know Southfield, Royal Oak, Pleasant Ridge. I know they're all members. And one of the key things that I like about this is that it allows us to have a voice at the national level. And I know that we get to sit and have the same voice as the bigger cities in the United States. So anyways, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Mayor, I know that you've had an opportunity to attend at least one, one of the sessions, and I'm hoping that you'll help me answer any questions that council may have.
Sure will. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Vice DeSessa, because I brought this up at the last meeting, for bringing it to the agenda so quickly. As the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we see different cities collaborating with each other just in our own neighborhood. This gives us a national opportunity to learn from other cities. Again, as I said at the last meeting, I know when the mayor came back from Seattle, he was very enthused, and now we'll even be able to join some committees on the National League of Cities once we're a member. So it's going to benefit not just the cities, it's going to benefit the residents. It's a win-win for all. And again, thank you for bringing it so quickly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I share those same sentiments. I'm very pleased to have this before us for consideration. And the point I would just like to add, again, isn't more of a question, just additional context and commentary around this. As many of you know, we also belong to a thing called the Michigan Municipal League, or MML. And this is seen as a complementary organization that serves similar-type functions, but in a different, in a different context. So as was mentioned, it's more, as its name implies, a national league of cities. It gives us greater exposure to items across the country and broader avenues to exchange information, to share lessons learned, to ask questions, and bring insights back to our community as well. So given our strong presence in the Michigan Municipal League, I can certainly vouch for the value that this will bring. I know MML is an active participant in the National League of Cities, so we are represented through them indirectly. And now we, if we move forward with this, we'd be able to be represented directly. So this is, this is a great step forward for the city.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. DeSessa?
Just one more comment, Your Honor. Please know that this is not a budgeted item in this year's budget. So if the council concurs with this, obviously, we can move forward. But then I will have the finance director come to us at the next meeting with the, with the appropriate budget adjustments. We have a couple of others, and we just felt that we would wait and see what action council would take. But, but just so you know.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there, are there any particular items that we want to get involved with the MML? We're involved now with the water and sewer line program. Is there, I'm not sure what all the, I read their stuff, but I'm not sure. Do we have any ideas of what, where we want to go with them? Or are we just going to join the committees and start to learn from that process?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you go first.
Okay. There are a number of important policy committees whereby we would have an influence and be able to represent the point of view of smaller cities, for example, on the national scene. We would have an opportu- a simple thing. At the conference, not quite so simple. When I was at the conference in Seattle, I had an opportunity to sit down with the Department of Transportation Secretary, Fox, and discuss with him the whole question of Woodward Avenue. That kind of opportunity shows up in those kinds of circumstances. And so membership in this kind of an organization will allow us exposure to major decision-makers nationally. And hopefully, we'll be able to represent our interests in that kind of environment, just as we do at MML with Councilmember Baker on their board of directors. So that would be my, my response. Ms. DeSessa?
If I can just add a few more programs that are available to us that we could do. Actually, there's one other program that they provide for us, and we do participate, and they don't charge us anything, and it's an expensive item. There is the, the Community Showcase Video Program, where you can, you go on our, on our website, and they will come in and they'll do our, that video that where it helps us to promote our, our schools, our downtown. Those videos were done by contracted individuals that they hired and professional. And they, they did it for us at no cost. So that's another thing that they've been able to do for us. The other things that I've seen, just looking at their programs, and I'd like to look into it a little bit further. You know, as, as governments, you know, we do join our state and our local county purchasing alliances. You know, many times I'll come before you and I'll say, you know, we went through the Macomb County, or we went through the Mitten, or something like that in order to buy. Well, now, if we join, we'll also be able to go, you know, use it at the, at the national level. As Councilman Kadekko was saying, you know, now we'll be able to go even greater, not just local, but work with other communities nationwide. And then also, just like we have in our, in our county, where they have a discount drug program in Oakland County, now there is a national drug program, discount program, that we may want to take a look at and see if this is something that we should offer to our residents. So I think these are two projects or two programs that I would like to take a look at. And, and of course, as the mayor has said, just to be able to sit at the same table with some of the key officials and just discuss with them, I think is, is very important. And I strongly recommend this to the city council. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional discussion, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. 114?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M. 214, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a third-party specialized services operating assistance contract between SMART and the city of Berkeley for public transportation services.
Is it a motion to approve M. 214?
Move to approve M. 214.
Moved to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak, with support by Councilmember Edgar. Ms. DeSessa?
Council, this also, this agreement also comes before you on an, on an annual basis. And I know that our city attorney has reviewed it, and he has concurred to recommend it to the city council. I know there was a question on the date, and I think we have a satisfactory answer, I hope. But before I reply to that, I'll ask our Director of Parks and Recreation to just come up. And I know he, council, so you know for the record, he did call ahead of time because he had, he was working at the ICE Arena, so he wasn't exactly dressed for the meeting today. So he apologized. He says, "Jane, I am not dressed today." And I said, "That's okay, come, come on down." And so please, just, Tom, if you don't mind, sir, please give us a quick, a quick summary of what this contract is all about, and then hopefully answer that question about the timeframe that the city attorney had asked as well. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. You've seen this contract before. This is one of those things that, you know, it's important to all of us because, well, it's important. It matters. It makes a difference to people's lives, and we couldn't do it without these funds. This is the one piece, excuse me, this is the one piece of funding that comes directly from the state of Michigan. Community and municipal credits. Community and municipal credits that we also receive through SMART will come at another time. Will come before you and ask for approval for those funds at a later date. As you can, the question came up regarding the timeframe. The dates that you see in, in the contract are actually SMART's operating fiscal year. SMART has to wait until they get money released from the state of Michigan. That money was released from the state on December 18th. So that's why we're three months into their fiscal year, and we are now asking for your approval.
Very good. Are there any questions for Ms. Caldwell? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for bringing this before us and for your time here. I know we took you away from activities elsewhere to be a part of us here tonight. Thank you for that. Can you tell us a little bit, just give us some perspectives and examples of how this service is used throughout the community, the kinds of folks that benefit from this programming, and the extent to which we leverage something like this? How important it is for us, basically?
Sure. You know, it's mainly for the senior citizens in our community, people with disabilities, people that don't have family in the area. It allows us to, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the rides are to medical appointments. But, you know, and people need to go grocery shopping, people need to go and, you know, just take care of the businesses that they need to take care of. And this program allows us to be able to get people to where they need to be. Now, all the rides for this program need to originate out of the city of Berkeley. You know, and so it is Berkeley people that are getting the, you know, the full advantage of this service.
Thank you.
Very good. Any additional discussion on this topic? I know it comes before us every year, and it's nice that you stay on top of it and make sure that we're in compliance and get what is going to be helpful for our community.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. 214?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven?
Resolution number R. 414, matter of approving a resolution authorizing a letter of agreement between the city of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association for a contract position with the Public Safety Department.
Is it a motion to approve R. 414?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. DeSessa?
Council, these next two items, they're kind of like, they're related. So we're going to take one item first and then the next one, just so that everybody's clear on what we're doing. I, I know our deputy chief, Mr. Robert North, is here with us, and he will help me answer any questions that the city council may have, and then also perhaps just give a quick summary. But, but under this item, this first item, it is asking the city council, we are asking the city council to approve a, a resolution to allow us to authorize this letter of agreement for a contract employee. And with that, I'll ask our deputy chief, North, to just simply explain exactly what the responsibilities of this position are and what this contract is all about. So thank you, deputy chief. I appreciate it. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSessa, Your Honor, Council. I'm filling in for the chief tonight. He had an uncle pass away out of state. There's a family gathering this evening, so I'm pinch-hitting for the chief in this situation. The contractor, the letter of agreement with the union, the chief has worked out. This is just about a continuation of what we've done previously to this point, to allow us to supplement some manpower as we do some adjustments and hire some full-time people. That is, in a nutshell, the union's in agreement with it. They've been, they've worked it all out. It's all set to go, and that's what it is. It's just a continuation of contractor position with the agreement of the union.
So this is pretty straightforward?
Yes.
Are there any questions, Ms. DeSessa?
Just a comment, Your Honor, just to remind the city council that, that there is an end date for this contract, and we're looking at the timeframe to start January 7th, to go all the way to March 31st of this year. Again, it's to help us, again, with the, with the contract until we can hire a full-time employee.
Right. Anybody have any additional questions on this topic? Seeing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. 414?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read the related item on number eight?
Motion number M. 314, matter of approving the contract with Michael Garnett as a contractor acting as a firefighter dispatcher prisoner processor in the Public Safety Department for the time period of January 7th, 2014, to March 31st, 2014.
Is it a motion to approve M. 314?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Edgar. Ms. DeSessa?
So this is the second part. Now, we're recommending the actual person to the city council. And Officer Garnett has done an excellent job for the city of Berkeley, and he has been in this position for a while. We are asking him to just simply extend it for a few more months so they can give Public Safety some time to hire a new person and bring in this individual, hopefully, no later than the end of March. At least that is our plan. So the city attorney has reviewed this agreement. There are very, very minor change, or hardly no changes, except for the dates and things of that nature. But I'll turn it over to our deputy chief and see if he has any other comments he'd like to make.
Well, this is, like I said, this is straightforward. This is what we had before. It's an extended time with an end date. We have two new hires who are currently in a field training officer program, which kind of precludes us from adding a third to that pile because of scheduling and other situations like that. This gives us the opportunity to go forward with this contract with an experienced person to fill the gap with an end date until we proceed further with another new hire.
Very good. And Councilmember Kadek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've said it before, from this position, Officer Garnett, once again, has come through for us, for a guy that thought he was going to retire a while ago. He's sticking around with us. But in all sincerity, without Mike Garnett there, helping the younger officers, mentoring them, and again, filling in positions where we need them, I can't thank him enough. And I just want to say thank you, Mr. Garnett, Officer Garnett.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the same vein, I just wanted to express my gratitude to Michael Garnett for his dedication to the city. Thank him for helping us out in this.
Very good. Councilwoman Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to add a comment. I think this will save the city a lot of money because of the amount of overtime we'd have to pay if we didn't bring Mike Garnett back. We'd kind of shoot our budget. So he's coming back, he's helping us out, he's doing a wonderful job. And again, I'd like to thank him also, so, thank you.
Very good. So on that note of gratitude, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. 314?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and I believe Councilmember Baker is up first.
Correct. Thank you, Your Honor. It was Cabaret Robert who once said, "Character is the ability to carry out a good resolution long after the excitement of the moment has passed." And again, that's a, "Character is the ability to carry out a good resolution long after the excitement of the moment has passed." And as we know, the confetti is settled from the New Year celebrations, and many of the resolutions that we set in best-of-intentsions have already had the opportunity to teeter on some of those, and I'd like us to, to think about the ways in which we can demonstrate our own character to those resolutions that, when that moment of excitement was upon us, and we said, "I'm going to do this," or "I'm going to do that," to help see that through, because you had good intentions when you brought that idea to fruition, and I'd like to see that carry forward. And one of the things that I'd like us to think about, a resolution that hopefully goes year-round is again around safety, especially this time of year with icy conditions and the rain and snow, and now, you know, with frigid, freezing weather conditions. The importance of being safe for yourself, for your family, for those that depend upon you, and those of us around us, to really be careful. The slip, strips, and falls is the number-one source of accidents. And it's, it's simple things. A second is, of course, vehicle-related. And you can put those two together, because one of the large incidents for slip, strips, and falls is exiting a vehicle. You know, just not looking when you're stepping out of the car, you're thinking about something, and just taking the wrong step on something slippery. So just be careful, take that extra time to be safe out there. I would like, again, to extend our gratitude and thanks to the Rochester Avon Historical Society for their, their support of the city and our history to bring back something. It was invented in the city, and almost 200 years later, it's returned, it's returned home. So very grateful for that. This Wednesday, January 8th, the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, has their board meeting. They'll be talking about Coolidge initiatives, as well as kind of really going through their priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. It's hard to believe that, as we just turned the new year here, but looking ahead to the budget process, those initial conversations. It's hard to believe that as we just turned, uh, the new year here, but, uh, looking ahead to the, the, uh, the budget process, those initial conversations are underway. And, and so it's an opportunity for that board and, and for the others to think about the ways in which they'd like to, to move forward, um, with their portions of the city's responsibilities. Um, and, uh, just to close by, I was saying, whatever resolutions, uh, you've made to yourself or to others, uh, take those little steps each day. You know, sometimes it, we come across something that seems, uh, so overwhelming or sort of difficult to accomplish. Uh, break those down into little bite-sized chunks that you can, uh, you can manage and move forward with and, and keep those resolutions. Because they're important to you when you set them and it's good to see them through. So with that, I'll resolve to, to close with a smile and say thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
I'd just like to add a little bit to what Councilmember Baker said. In addition to slip strips and falls, it is now minus ten, feels like minus twenty-five outside. Uh, be very careful. Uh, frostbite can come very quickly. I know I've been frostbitten a number of times having spent many years on ski patrol, working outside. I've been there. And physical exertion in this cold weather, your heart is really working. There's been three or four, uh, casualties in the metro area already from that. So please, residents, take it easy. Don't exert yourself. Spend a little time outside. Get back inside, get warm, you know, rest and, uh, be safe. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Turbrack.
Just like to wish everybody, all the residents, a very happy twenty fourteen. I certainly wish everybody a very prosperous year. I know, uh, it's, it's January. It's very early on. A lot of things are going to happen. Um, and I want to send a little shout-out to, um, our, usually our, our front row fan, Josephine Brewer, uh, not here. And I don't blame her for not braving the, uh, the weather today, but Josephine, we are thinking about you, believe me. We all commented early on that, that you weren't there and, and, and we certainly miss you. Uh, but you certainly made the wise choice in staying in tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Edgar.
I just want to wish everyone again a happy new year and may these days be filled with joy for you. And stay cuddled up and warm tonight.
Councilmember Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, again, I'm, I'm really happy that we have joined the National League of Cities. Um, I'm really looking forward to hearing different, uh, items coming forth from there. Um, too many times, our employees don't get enough credit. Uh, I've said it before and we truly are blessed to have the employees we have in Berkeley. While many of us were home Christmas morning, celebrating the holiday with our families, there was a DPW crew over on Cumberland and Wilshire, four men, working on a, a water main break. Okay? And they got called at like four-thirty in the morning. So, you know, again, I think that the, some of the residents don't realize that New Year's Eve or Christmas morning, they're out there working. And I want to thank them for the great job they did, uh, during the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours of, of removal of the snow. Also, the public safety department, you know, they're on, on guard twenty-four hours also, seven days a week. So I just want to say thank you to all of our employees that have been working hard over this holiday season. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Happy new year, everyone. I can't believe it's twenty fourteen. You know, Josephine did send me a, uh, email message, so y'all know. She did send me saying that, uh, it's too cold out there. But, uh, but she's watching us on television, so, Josephine. I'm sure she's, I'm sure she's enjoying this. Um, the only other items that I, that I would like to just very briefly go over, uh, with our residents and the city council. You know, um, I appreciate the council, uh, acknowledging the work by many of our public works crews. And, and sometimes I, I wish that we could say that we could answer immediately. And I think I know, I think the mayor, looking at the mayor, he knows where I'm going here. But there are times when, um, you know, we can't always, um, answer a, a concern. It, it, sometimes we get calls from residents after, you know, late in the afternoon, or, or it's on a weekend or whatever. But I, I would just like to ask the residents to, you know, please, um, leave your message on, on our phones. Uh, if it's a public works issue, leave it on the phone. We do take a look at it and we'll do our best to address it as quickly as possible. Uh, and obviously, if it's an emergency of some sort, you know, please call, uh, nine-one-one and have public safety assist you. You know, these are, 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 our weather right now, i- it's, it's, uh, it's difficult and, and there's a lot of people experiencing, uh, you know, some, some, um, some difficulties. But, uh, but please know, we are here for you. We work with you. We work for you. And we're very happy to help you in whatever we can do. Um, but again, um, your patience sometimes, I know, it's appreciated. So, but bear with us, bear with us. Uh, the budget process is right around the corner. Uh, I know that the finance director has already sent me a draft review. He's made a couple of changes, but it's coming, as they say. Um, also, council, you know, this coming Friday, we do have a, a work session, just a little reminder. And again, it is part of our budget session and it's part of our, of our long-term goals that, that we had, uh, discussion that we had not too long ago. Um, we're working with a, with a, with a, with a financial consultant to help us on getting some of the numbers, especially, uh, we want to make sure that they're accurate. I'm not sure that I'll be able to get them in time. So I may ask the city council, um, for, to, to help us come up with another time, another date. I don't know. I will know Thursday for sure. I know I'm looking at a finance director here. Um, he's hoping that we can get the data early, allow staff to take a look at it and see if we can come back and put it together quickly so that the city council can take a look at it. So, so we'll see. We, we want to be able, for this meeting to be productive and we want to be able to give you information that you can use so that you can make a decision and, and give direction. So please bear with us on that, on that. We may have to change dates, is what I'm saying. But for now, we are looking at, uh, at the, at the tenth, I believe, the tenth. So that's, that's a date. Um, I too would also like to acknowledge the, the work of, of our public works crew. You know, they, they, a lot of people don't know that they're out there and, uh, and we're very fortunate. Believe it or not, in our city of more than, uh, fourteen thousand people, we have, uh, eleven people that work full-time in our public works department. And they are, you know, they're responsible for taking care of everything. I mean, we do have contractors for a couple of items, obviously, um, for the big, big gigantic ones. But, uh, but they do the maintenance work. They do the street sweeping. They, they do our, our, our maintaining of our, of our properties and things of that nature. And I'm very, very grateful to them and very thankful for these, uh, eleven individuals for, in the entire city of Berkeley who do this for us. So I'm, I'm very grateful to them. And also to our public safety department. I know that they're out there also in, in, in the bitter cold. And, uh, and, and they also have, uh, you know, they have, they, it's their job, obviously, but, but they do an amazing job. And, and they've been able to, these past few weeks, um, uh, they've caught quite, quite a few interesting individuals and I'll leave it at that. I will leave it at that. But, uh, but yeah, our staff is amazing. And, and of course, our administrations, administrative staff too. I mean, they, they're out there and, uh, but if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be able to do the day-to-day operation. So I just wanted to thank them again, especially during, during these times. It's, it is a little difficult. So thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Stern.
Like Mr. Sabuda, I will be short on words and just, uh, wish everybody a happy new year and stay warm.
Thank you. Well, my words will be brief as well. Um, I would like to, uh, welcome and recognize, uh, in our audience tonight, Mr. Roger Blake from the Berkeley School District. It's great to, uh, see the continued collaboration, uh, between, uh, the city, uh, of Berkeley and the Berkeley School District. We have just come through, uh, the Christmas period, a time when, uh, many people recognize the importance of the faith leaders of our community. And of course, they work exceptionally hard, uh, through the, the Christmas season. But this particular Christmas, uh, this area has lost two important faith leaders. Uh, Archbishop Elias from Saint Mary's Orthodox Church on Twelve Mile and Monsignor Bill Easton from Shrine. And we remember both of them as, um, wonderful leaders in the community. Uh, people dedicated to caring for the poor and those who are in need and attending to the faith needs of all of us. So we keep them and their families in our prayers. And, uh, finally, um, Councilmember Baker was talking about the confetti of New Years. The confetti of New Years, uh, Councilmember Baker, is not over yet. The national championship football game is on. Uh, kickoff is in a half an hour. Uh, and so, uh, the new year will really have begun when we have new national collegiate champions. On that, on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn by Councilmember Kedekel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Edgar. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The January sixth, two thousand and fourteenth meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Hi, Josephine.